Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Boards of Education. It is Monday, December 18. Please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Schottke, can you please take the roll call?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Mathias.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Schottke here. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Present. Next on the agenda, I need a motion for approval for the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. And then we have celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Faub, and members of the board. I'd like to ask Mr. Kurt Johnson to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Presidents Dr. Hank Faub and Superintendent Wether O'Neill and this in which board members. We are here to tis the season, it's to be greeting, excuse me, tis the season. We're here once again for our annual tradition to present the holiday Superintendent's E-card. And with me this evening, I have Maggie Malone, who's going to join me here. And she's going to walk through and explain to you and share with you the process and the production of this year's eclectic compilation of time, talent, and treasure that you will immensely enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and it's an honor to be here again. We are excited to present another awesome card to you today. And I'll announce the students after the card. You'll see the names of the student artists. And then we also are fortunate to have an in-house teacher who is a musical engineer and who has a sound, their own recording studio, who lent their services and their facilities to have some of our students come to the studio and to do the recording. And so we're excited and we'll, I'll give some more information about that once we've heard the card. But the music is our GRPS students and all the art is by our GRPS students also. So we are very excited. And if it's okay to dim the lights, without further ado, this is the world premiere of GRPS Finest. More amazing work by amazing students. And when I call the students' names, we'll start with the students who had artwork selected. When you hear your first name, would you please stand up? We have Angelina from Aberdeen and her principal, Jamie Masco, is here and her art teacher, And Deonte is here. Deonte is from Brookside and his principal is Danitia Neal Killiam. And her, his art teacher, Dan Slaughter, is here.[351.22][351.22](applause) And we have Abby from City Middle and her principal, Mr. Ryan Huppert, is here.[363.12][363.12](applause) And Avery is here from Lincoln Developmental and his art teacher, Lori Rubin, and principal, Mr. Steve Cato, are here.[378.53][378.53](applause) And we have Ariana from Pine Grove Elementary with her principal, Keith Hutchins, and art teacher Lori Rubin are here.[393.22][393.22](applause) And we have Anaya from Riverside and Anaya's principal, Mr. Bill Martin, is here with her art teacher, Chelsea Doyle.[407.00][407.00](applause) And the choir, our students from City, and we have Liam Andrew Dawson, Ellie and Jack with their teacher, Mrs. Darla Jewell, and their principal, Mr. Ryan Huppert. And Ms. Deborah Perry is the one who did the engineering and offered her recording studio, Joint Air Studio, and she's also a GRPS music teacher. So if all the students would stand up, we'll have them go around and shake everybody's hand. And Mrs. Jewell, if you could lead them. And one last thing, we certainly want to thank Superintendent Wether O'Neill for helping us and allowing this opportunity for our students. And also thank Kelly with Communications. Kelly put this together and she always does just outstanding work. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Maggie.
(applause)
Hi. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Right. Very well done. Thanks for doing this for us. It's awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Such a champion.
Love that.
(inaudible).
Good job. Thanks so much.
All right. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Davis.
Good job, pal.
Thank you so much.
It's a lot.
Older, so it's nice to have.
Thank you.
Nice.
Very nice.
(inaudible).
And our email has been down, on or down. Mm-hmm.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. So, next on the agenda.
(inaudible).
Well, that happens, yes.
Hate to cut down this, you know, at time of year.
Energy.
You want to be happy. All right. Mr. Santana, what do you have for us?
Ah, nice to see you all.
You too.
The first thing I wanted to talk about is admission letters for U of M. They're coming in the 24th of this month. About 12 of our students from Innovation Central are waiting for those really anxiously. I'm one of them, so.[526.04][526.04](laughing) Give me lots these holidays. I know other students from different GRPS schools are also waiting for them. So there's, these should be interesting holidays.
Yeah.
Also, Innovation Central will be hosting the School Choice Winter Expo and the Winter Carnival, the 19th of January. This provides students and parents the opportunity to look at other schools for the 2018-2019 school year. And this will be, this will take place from 4 to 6. And really good news, girls Ottawa varsity team, the basketball team, they're to a 4-0 start, so they're doing fantastic. You know, get out there, support them. It hasn't happened in quite a while, so this is a great start. Also, the, both GRPS basketball team boys, the Union and Ottawa, they, they both won at the Battle of I-96 this weekend at Ottawa Hill, so sports are going great. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Abby.
Yeah. First and foremost, I would like to give a shout out to our Union wrestling team for everyone on the team placed at Greenville, so that was awesome. The second, the board, the board met the superintendent, met the student council, and they were able to put on, they were able to learn the roles and responsibilities, so that was awesome. And lastly, we had an athletic leadership summit, which was the first one they've ever did at Mona Shores. The Grand Rapids athletes in the OK Black Conference were able to meet other athletes that they played with from different schools, so City, then City kids and Union kids met, like Kennewa kids and all of that. And they were able to learn sportsmanship, leadership, and the, excuse me, the social media and how it affects our athletes. One cool event that we did was called the Privilege Walk. And that was, they asked questions and if it pertained to you, you would walk forward. If it didn't, you'll stay at your spot. So a lot of the Reese Puffer kids were able to see, like Muskegon kids and things like that, how it, how different they were in a way. So we kind of got together and like built on each other, so it was pretty cool.
That's nice.
Thank you both. Really appreciate the work you put into these reports and what you bring to us. It's really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comment for board agenda items?
We have none.
Okay. Secretary's report.
All right. I have six items this evening. So first, board members, a reminder to those of you who serve on the Academic Achievement Committee, that meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, December 19, at 9:00 a.m. right here in the auditorium. All right, parents, you are reminded that winter break is Monday, December 25 through Friday, January 5. We also have a half-day this Friday, December 22. Schools will be closed during this time and loop programs will not run this week, Thursday or Friday. That's December 21st and 22nd. Regular school hours and activities will resume on Monday, January 8, 2018. Fellow board members, registration is now open for the National Association of School Board Members Annual Conference. This year's theme is Be Extraordinary. The conference will take place in San Antonio, Texas, from April 7 through 9. Please make both President Faub and Ms. Anderson in the Superintendent's Office aware if you would like more information about this conference. Additionally, the Michigan Association of School Board Members is offering a Winter Institute Board Member Certification classes and Board President Workshops from February 23rd through 25th in Mount Pleasant. MASB provides professional development opportunities throughout the year, so please check out their calendar by accessing MASB.org to learn more about other opportunities, including online courses. GRPS is now accepting applications for all its theme schools and centers of innovation, including the new Academy of Teaching and Learning. The application deadline is January 31, 2018. Applications may be done online at apply.grps.org or a form may be picked up from any GRPS school or Student Services and then returned to Student Services right here at the Administration Building, 1331 Franklin Southeast in Grand Rapids. And lastly, please join the Literacy Center of West Michigan for its sixth annual Community Literacy Summit with keynote speaker, Mr. Claudio Sanchez, NPR Education Correspondent. This year's very important theme is Reading by Third Grade: Our Shared Opportunity, Our Shared Responsibility. The summit will take place on January 25 from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Grand Valley State University's Everheart Center, located at 301 Fulton Street West. Tickets are $25 for general admission and 15 for students. To purchase tickets, please visit the Literacy Center online at literacycenterwm.org/summit or contact them direct at 616-459-5151. This concludes my report.
Yeah. Committee Chair update. Dr. Baker, Finance Committee.
We just met a couple hours ago and we're having good discussions about what's happening with the building and the bond, and so it's always good if people want to keep up with that and our discussions here. The, but the main thing is, as we move to the new year and potentially a new board planning for the year, we will have our, we're still planning to have the January Finance Committee as it's been on the Fourth Monday, so that way we will get our first budget amendment. So I think that that's, that would follow also with the Academic Achievement Committee meeting, even if those things change, so. So look for the budget amendment on the Fourth Monday Finance Committee, so.
Any questions for Dr. Baker? Thank you. Ms. Schottke at HAC Policy.
Yes, another great meeting, primarily focused on review of existing policy and elimination of a couple of policies. So this evening, I will once again take over the voting portion of the night as we look at six policies that have been updated and two that we're going to suggest for elimination this evening.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
So for me, Dr. Faub, I only have Mr. Larry Johnson tonight to talk about inclement weather.
Good evening, Dr. Faub, Superintendent Neal, remaining board members. First of all, happy holidays as we go into the season. But we also go into the, this time of year when, when we wonder when and why we close schools. And so just want to walk that, walk through that very briefly, how we make those decisions. We try to make a decision to close schools if we can by 10 o'clock the previous night, if the, if the weather permits and the conditions, we feel that condition's going to be worse than the next morning. The next opportunity for us to close would be 5:30 a.m., and we have to close by 5:30 a.m. If we go beyond 5:30 a.m., our buses are already moving, kids are already moving around in the city around 6 o'clock. So we try to make that decision by 5:30 using the, not only the robocall, but using the Grail system. Our Communications Office is notified, they give that information out to all the local media outlets who then can broadcast it out. There's a series of individuals who are out making decisions, operations, myself, driving the streets at night, looking at some major streets, side streets, seeing if we can get buses up and down the streets. Even days following a severe storm, it may be difficult to move yellow buses up and down some of our side streets where many of our wheelchair-bound students are picked up door to door. If we can't get those buses down the street, there's, there's a high probability we will not have school. Again, major streets, if they're plowed, we can get through, depending on whether or not our lots are cleaned out and our walkways have been shoveled, if, if parents in the community have shoveled their lots. We also talked to various, various individuals who's, who's traveling throughout the night, cab drivers, road commission, individuals who's out all night that can also give us conditions of the road, Sheriff Department, Police Department. You will see sometimes the outlined area schools close due to wind chill factors. The county has an agreement that if wind chill factors go below 20 degrees and sustain for a long period of time, districts will close. Oftentimes, some of the outlined districts will close prior to that, and there's other conditions that they have to consider, the open fields and no buildings where we may not get the wind chill hitting us as hard in the city. We try to make the best decision for, for young people. We also take into consideration that some kids may not have a place to go once they come out and their parents let them out in the morning. And so we dispatch security to all those buildings, even though we're closed, to make sure we still have someone there to receive, to receive kids. Even though teaching staff is allowed to stay home, principals are, if they can get in safely, we ask them to come in to open buildings in the event we, we receive kids. Once the school day is gone, if we need to close prior to the end of the day, that's a decision that we have to make. If kids are here, we don't want, we don't need to close early. We can keep them here and just do a slow release. But after school, pre-K and kindergarten, that decision has to be made by 11 o'clock because kid, the buses just cannot make that loop around to get, get back in time. The roads are just too severe. And then after school and athletic events, we try to make that decision, the evening programs, by 1:30 in the afternoon. There are times when we will have events going on in the city, but we won't, we will not allow our teams to go out on the road. For instance, this past week, we would not allow teams to travel to Benton Harbor or over to Muskegon. We could do games within the city safely, but we just didn't want to put our teams out on the road for fear that the road conditions and the possibility of the roads icing over when they come back. So those are the decisions that, that's communicated to the superintendent, operations involved, all of our EDs are involved, the divisional EDs, they're all kept in the loop, athletics is involved. And so we try to make an informed decision. At the end of the day, sometimes parents get a little bit upset with us, but it is their, their choice at the end of the day whether or not they send the kids to school. But we, we try to make a good decision, a safe decision. Not everyone will be happy with the decision. There are some that's upset when we open and some that are upset when we close. So it's just a, it's just a balancing act that we, we try to, we try to do. So, so that's pretty much the process of inclement weather, and we are definitely into that season now, and we're checking roads nightly. So we have someone up all night, every night, checking roads by the hour to make sure that we don't get caught, caught shorthanded. And if Saturday was a school day, we would have been closed.[1201.58][1201.58](laughing)
Thanks.[1203.58][1203.58](laughing)
Just know that my sons are trying to explain this policy on a regular basis to their friends.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And it's not appreciated. It's so much more complex than that, they say.
It doesn't have anything to do with wearing pajamas inside out.
Nah. It's probably the toughest decision to make during, during the school year, whether or not we close. We have to close one of our buildings today, and that's not really a weather, it was weather associated but not necessarily weather related, and oftentimes we may lose power in a neighborhood. And so, again, we have to make that decision. And we were almost always closed with a power outage because consumers give us a six-block, a six-hour block for a power restoration. So this morning, they say 11:30 or 12:30, we closed at 6:30, but we had power at 8:30. But it's already, it was already too late. We had to make the decision early, and so that's, that's, those are some of the decisions that, the tough decisions that we have to make, so. All right. Thank you.
We have several action items. The first is approval of the purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Do I have support for that motion? Any discussion? None? Take the vote, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is an easement, an approval of an easement resolution with consumers' power. Do I have motion for approval of this?
Motion to approve that easement resolution.
Report. Any discussion?
Vote. All right, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Schottke, I'll let you give the context for these before I ask for a motion.
All right. Very good. So the first policy that we are looking at editing this evening is Policy 1730, Board Legislative Program. So the edits to this particular policy state that, so we removed the end part of this policy, the legislative presentations portion, as the board's designee has already given permission to provide written and oral presentations on our behalf earlier on in that policy. So the committee did not see that there was any reason to provide legislative presentations to us, the board, in advance of, for our approval. We already have our guiding principles and our legislative platform, and that, of course, informs our designee. And then there was just some general language cleanup that was provided.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Any discussion?
All right, very good. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Schottke, I'll let you give the context for these before I ask for a motion.
All right. Very good. So the first policy that we are looking at editing this evening is Policy 1730, Board Legislative Program. So the edits to this particular policy state that, so we removed the end part of this policy, the legislative presentations portion, as the board's designee has already given permission to provide written and oral presentations on our behalf earlier on in that policy. So the committee did not see that there was any reason to provide legislative presentations to us, the board, in advance of, for our approval. We already have our guiding principles and our legislative platform, and that, of course, informs our designee. And then there was just some general language cleanup that was provided.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
All right. Very good. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, the next policy is Policy 2150, Compensation and Benefits. The only edit to this policy was to include in the title of the policy, Superintendent, as this one relates particularly to the Superintendent's compensation and benefits. This then keeps this consistent with other compensation and benefit policies that state the classification of employment.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Questions? Go ahead.
All right, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant excused. President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next policy, 5200, Staff Conduct. This policy was updated to include that falsifying of time and attendance records are considered theft from the district. We also included verbiage to encourage the wearing GRPS spirit wear under the attend, yeah, excuse me, under the, not attendance policy, I'm sorry. Uniform. Uniform, thank you very much. My notes were wrong. And also strongly discouraging wearing other district's spirit wear.
Motion for approval?
Support. Support.
All right, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next policy, 5220, Student and Staff Relations. This policy had some redundancy with Policy 8300, Student Discipline, so we edited that to take out those duplications and changed language to reflect professional behavior with students. We also added the references to the social media policy. I also would just want to make note that Ms. Pitt said since the board voted that policy in, we've had a very positive impact on HR with far less complaints about social media use.
Do I have a motion for approval of 5220?
So moved.
Support.
See no question?
Very good. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next policy is 5357, Family Medical Leave Act. This policy was updated for alignment with the current statute and also union contracts.
Motion for approval of 5357?
So moved. Support.
Any deliberations?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is Policy 5710, Compensation Guides and Contracts, Non-Certified Staff. We updated this policy title to be consistent with other compensation policies again, and the edits provided clarification between exempt employees or employees involved in collective bargaining. bargaining.
Do I have a motion for approval of first reading of Policy 5710?
So moved.
Support.
Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused, and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next is the recommendation for elimination of Policy 1575, Administration in Absence of Policy. So the committee recommends removal of this policy as running the operations of the district is the responsibility of the Superintendent, and if a decision is absent of policy, then it is in the Superintendent's purview to decide without Board, Board involvement. So the committee also determined that many decisions of the Superintendent are already provided in policies like purchasing and grants, and that there are limited times that this would come into play.
Do I have a motion for approval of eliminating Policy 1575?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
All right, good. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused, and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. And the next is a recommendation of elimination of Policy 2170, Professional Development Opportunities, Superintendent. The committee recommends removal of this policy as professional development is part of the Superintendent's contract and is not regulated by policy.
Motion for approval to eliminate Policy 2170?
So moved.
Support.
Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused, and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next is a meeting date change because of the way the holiday fell this year. The organizational meeting fell while the district was not in session for school. Lot of travel plans for everybody, so removing that meeting to be on the 8th of January. Do I have a motion for approval of that meeting date change?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused, and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Support.
The vote.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused, and President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Last, we have a discussion item, and that is the Board Public Hearing and Special Board Meeting regarding the Promise Zone Application Grant, and that is on December 29, 2017, at 1:00 p.m. at the Board Chambers. Are there questions regarding that?
Yeah, can we just get a quick summary of this? Who, who is granting the app, the grant, et cetera?
So actually, we've, we are applying, but John Hemhold or Shen. May not have legal questions. Let's, John.
Sure.
So this legislation, there was legislation recently passed and signed by Governor Snyder last month that would expand this to create five zones. This is something that we're working through, the Michigan Department of Treasury is who administers this, and so the process is a first-come, first-served basis. So one of the reasons why we moved on this is that there are already four on the waiting list. So there's 10 in place, four on the waiting list, and the opportunity for at least Grand Rapids to be considered, that doesn't bind us per se, but you're triggering this public hearing and adopting the resolution is what would position GRPS to be first in line for this unique opportunity.
And it, and what? Well, first, so how many slots are there, and what did you mean by there's?
There's 10 slots. Well, the original law created 10 Promise Zones, the new law added an additional five. However, it's a first-come, first-served basis, so that we know that there's likely interests from other school districts from across the state, and so this was the chance to move forward quickly based on the counsel we received, and we're, we're right in line there to, to, to be well-positioned for this.
So the first five, essentially, out of my, could get it?
The, so there's 10 that are already there, the four that are on the waiting list, essentially, if they say yes, they're already in line. So they're already, there's four ahead of us who are in the first-come, first-served position, and then it's a matter of what districts are going to apply for that fifth, fifth slot, assuming those four on the waiting list all choose to stick with their application, some of whom have been on there for many, many years. So it's, this is really as much, again, well-positioning to ensure that if we decide, yes, this is the right thing to do, GRPS and our students are first in line.
And what does it provide?
It provides for a capture of the growth in the state education tax. So we would be able to capture a percentage of the growth in the state education tax, which could provide for, we have to run the numbers, but at least 50% or so of the funding that would go to pay for the scholarships would, would likely come from this tax capture. There is a local philanthropic requirement in order to meet that. We would actually have to provide the philanthropic coverage for the first two years before we were able to actually collect the capture. There would be a Promise Zone Authority that's nine of the 11 are appointed by the Superintendent, ones, two are appointed by the Senate Majority Leader and the Speaker, and there's a whole formal process for that. But we have time to make sure to do the due diligence, investigate this opportunity, and then, of course, we're well-positioned to be that first in line for one of those open slots.
Do you know what they're going to consider in terms of making that decision? Is it going to be based on need poverty of the district?
You have to have your free and reduced lunch greater than the state average, and we, so we're already in line for that. Notably, this is not limited to just GRPS. Any high school student in public or private schools graduating from high school in the city of Grand Rapids would be eligible for this. The minimum scholarship that we would have to work with the local philanthropic community, and eventually the tax capture, would be a two-year associate degree. However, others have done, started with the two years and then phased up to four years. Some have created different criteria around grade point averages and other things. So there's a few other dynamics to consider here, but it's certainly an opportunity. We have this very unique opportunity for challenged scholars, but right now, it's for students at Union, and, and there's six other high schools just in GRPS among the others that are in town. So this could create an opportunity for all students to benefit from a challenged scholar-like opportunity, and we, we are going to be in communication with the foundations, with higher ed, with elected officials, and to explore and ensure this is an opportunity we want.
Do we have any idea how soon this might begin to affect kids?
It depends on how soon the Promise Zone Authority would be formed and would then be able to bring consensus. The, the main step of the Promise Zone Authority would actually be to put together a Promise Zone plan that they then submit to the Michigan Department of Treasury. Michigan Department of Treasury informed us that that is essentially, once we put that in there, unless there's some glaring omission that's out of line with what the state law provides for, then we would essentially be granted the Promise Zone designation, and then the clock starts to tick on that two years where we would have to have, find the local, you have to raise the local dollars to cover the first two years, and then the third year is when the state tax capture kicks in, and that could cover somewhere around potentially 50%. We are still checking and running the numbers to see what that looks like.
So again, this is just the start of the process to get it processed, but there's a lot of time to vet and discuss and understand the implications, so.
Yeah, thanks for pursuing this. It's great.
Exciting. Thanks. All right, Superintendent, oh, no, we need public comment for non-agenda items.
Yes, we have one this evening. I'd like to invite forward Ms. Shawnee Paul Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, you have three minutes, and we can show you the minutes before your, when you have a minute left.
I have a minute left?
No, we'll show you when you have a minute left. You have three minutes.
My name is Shawnee Paul Oliver. Actually, I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Alonte Oliver. She's a three-year-old autistic little girl that sustained a concussion with a laceration across her forehead on a parked school bus in front of my home due to the negligence of the bus driver. My daughter wears a safety vest that is on her body, and it is the driver's responsibility to make sure that that child is strapped in to seat, and she was not. And the worst part about it is, is that instead of him saying what truly happened to her, he said to Dean Transportation, the police, as well as the fire department, that she tripped and fell over something when there was nothing obstructing the walkway. I was told by Dean Transportation, they do not have cameras on their bus, which I am finding out that is not true. I'm also being told that Larry Johnson, as well as the Superintendent, Mrs. Weather O'Neill, is responsible for having any further interaction with me as the parent on any type of change with the rules or, or plans or anything. I have yet to have heard from Mr. Johnson. I have not heard from Mrs. O'Neill. I've also had to go out of my way as the parent to speak to various different people about having mandatory cameras or bus aids on the bus. My daughter was denied a bus aid, and she is autistic educationally and medically. I will fight this to the top. I have a petition going on right now that is online, as well as one in person, that is going to be sent to the State Senate, House, as well as any other organization has anything to do with transportation. This is unexcusable, okay?